I'd like to get the meeting started. Bob, is there any changes to the agenda?
There is a revised agenda at your desk with one minor change on it under other business.
Is there a motion to adopt the agenda? Motion second to adopt the agenda, all in favor? Any opposed? Need approval of the February 27, 2014 minutes? If there's any additions, corrections, changes, need to know at this time. Motion for approval in a second, all in favor? Any opposed? Those minutes are now official. Any council members in the audience that would like to come forward and speak at this time? Seeing done, we'll move on. Nashville Next update, we're going to have that or who's giving that?
Hello?
Tiffany? Okay.
Okay. Good afternoon to the commissioners and everyone in the audience. My name is Tiffany K. Parte and I'm with the Planning Department and I work in the Community Plans Division. And your chairman, Rick Bernhardt, has asked all the staff members to provide updates on Nashville Next, and so I'm here today to talk about the Community Engagement Committee. And so the goals for today are just so you can get an understanding of the Community Engagement Committee. We'd like for you to understand their role and just want to review some successes and challenges that we've had along the way. So at the beginning of the Nashville Next process, Rick Bernhardt gave us a charge to make sure that we did our best to engage the Nashville community in this process because the success of this plan would depend on how well we engage the community. And so after that, we went forward and created three goals for the engagement process. So we want to make sure that we educate Nashvillians so they'll understand some of the major issues that we're facing over the next 25 years and then also understand how to get better engaged in the process. We also want to engage members of the community so they'll know how to get involved in the process, but then also stay engaged and also encourage other members to get engaged as well. And we also want to empower people so that when this process is over and the plan is adopted, everyone knows how to use it and can hold decision-makers accountable to what's in the plan that they helped to create. And so in my mind, the most important goal here is the engagement goal. And that brings us to the creation of the Engagement Committee. And so the Nashville Next Engagement Committee consists of about 40 people that represent different neighborhoods and business groups and also different demographics from all across Nashville. And so the committee helps us to reach out to those that are typically not heard in the planning process. They make sure that the process and its activities reflect all three goals of the engagement process. So all the participants you see here with their different icons. We also added a couple of members because we were seeing gaps in representation on the committee. And so we've added representatives from Belmont University and TSU to help us reach our college students. We've also added representatives from the Green Hills, Old Hickory, White's Creek, and the Dickerson Pike and North Nashville area. And we also have a new representative from MTA who's also connected with our young professionals in the city. So this makes up our entire Engagement Committee. And so their primary roles are to provide access, help us with communications, engagement, and also advising the staff. We're also working with the PR consultant locally here, McNeeley, Pickett &amp; Fox, and they're working as outreach consultants for us, and I'll talk a little bit more about them later. Okay. So talking through how the Engagement Committee is playing out their role in the process, they're helping us provide access to hard-to-reach and underrepresented communities and demographics. So in this case, this is a Kurdish community festival held in Centennial Park, and the Engagement Committee members were instrumental in providing access to the Kurdish community, enabling our team to conduct video interviews during the Nashville Next visioning process. There are also other hard-to-reach community members that the Engagement Committee has helped us in reaching. They've helped us reach our young people, seniors, folks that are of non-English-speaking populations, and also minorities and people of different faith backgrounds. And so just aside, the ladies that are in this photo here, I met them at a conference for Islamic women, and they were very uncomfortable about attending any civic processes. And once they heard about Nashville Next and how we were engaging folks, they felt more comfortable to attend. And so that would not have happened had we not had someone on our Engagement Committee to help provide access to that group. The Engagement Committee also assists us with communicating activities and issues to the public. So this photo here is a couple of our Engagement members on Channel 5 Open Line, and they're talking about equity and inclusion. And so members have also been instrumental in helping us with communications about meetings and events throughout the process. The Engagement Committee members are also very engaged themselves, and this helps when they're encouraging other folks to remain engaged. And the photos here are of Mina Johnson from West Nashville and then Danise Couch of Organized Neighbors of Edge Hill. And along with others, they participated in street teams last summer, which the teams were situated all across the county, and we did surveying, and it was one of our most successful engagement outreach events to date. And in terms of advising, the Engagement Committee, their primary role is to help advise us on how to best reach out to the Nashville community by identifying some key nuances that are particular to their different constituencies and also how to just improve engagement activities as we move forward in the process. And so in terms of a benchmark, with a process like this, well, we've engaged almost more than 10,000 people so far. Imagine Austin, which is a planning process in Austin, Texas, and then the Portland Plan engaged 14,000 and 17,000 people roughly. And just so you know, this type of process is not sexy and appealing to people, so we're kind of right on target where we should be in terms of engagement. These folks have, out of all these processes around this timeframe, they've engaged roughly 3% of their population on average. So we're right on target where we need to be. Okay, and then walking through just some successes and challenges, this is not my updated PowerPoint, but I wanted to show you kind of where we are making some headway and where we still have some challenges. Very quickly, we are narrowing the gap in terms of reaching out to white and African-Americans, but we still do have challenges in reaching our Hispanic, Latino, and Asian populations. We're also seeing where we're narrowing the gap in terms of reaching some of our Baby Boomers and our Millennials. They're kind of two big population groups that we need to hear from in this process, so we feel really good about that. With regard to education, we're narrowing the gap between folks with higher-level college degrees and then folks that only have some high school or some college education. We still want to do better with regard to reaching folks with associate's degrees or just some high school education because we know that's not just young people, but that may be adults as well. So working on that. And then also another success has been housing tenure, reaching folks who rent and folks who own, and so we're closing those gaps. And so this is kind of what the Engagement Committee looks at when we're looking at engagement reports. Where are their gaps? What do we need to do differently to make sure that we're reaching everyone? So what's next for the CEC? We're actually prepping right now for the next phase of outreach, which is Phase Four, which is the phase that everybody should be involved in because it will be the most important phase in this process. We'll be making some very tough decisions about the future. And the CEC has worked tirelessly through even some very external challenges, which include community apathy, process burnout, and then folks just not understanding planning and how it works necessarily. And so in our Phase Four outreach, we've heard their concerns, and we've incorporated changes that will help address some of these issues. So for the audience, if you want to get engaged in Nashville Next, we do have an online conversation going on at talk.nashvillenext.net. And I was just looking at the information for it. We celebrated one year with talk.nashvillenext.net, so it's been on for about a year, so it's ongoing. We do have a tool called Book a Planner where you can contact the Planning Department and have a planner come and speak to your group. Meeting to Go is something that the public should look forward to in this next phase. The planning staff will provide you materials about Nashville Next, and you provide your input, and you can meet with your civic group or residential group or whatever on your own time, get that input, and then send it back to the planning staff. Right now, you can like us on Facebook or follow us on Twitter at Nashville Next. And then also, if folks don't have technology, then we also have a phone number where folks can call and leave us any comments. And so with that, this is John Stern from the Hermitage Community, and I just want to say thank you, and I hope that you all are in the process. Thank you.
Bob, items to be deferred or withdrawn?
Yes, we have several items to be deferred or withdrawn, starting with item number 2A, 2014 CP-011-001, the South Nashville Community Plan Amendment. This is a request to amend the South Nashville Community Plan, the 2007 update, to change the land use policy from single-family attached and detached and neighborhood general policy to transition or buffer in neighborhood general land use policy for property located at 316 Tanksley Avenue. Staff recommendation is to defer to the April 24, 2014 Planning Commission meeting. Next item is item 2B. This is the Tanksley Avenue SP. This is a request to rezone from RS 10 to SP zoning for property located at 316 Tanksley Avenue to permit for automobile parking. Staff recommends deferral to the April 24, 2014 Planning Commission meeting. Next item is item 10, 2014 S-036-001, 1132 Tulip Grove Road. This is a request for concept plan approval to create 19 clustered single-family lots on property located at 1132 Tulip Grove Road. Staff recommends deferral to the April 10, 2014 Planning Commission meeting. Next item is item 11, 2014 S-034-001, Regal Home Lots. A request for final plat approval to create two lots located at 307, 307B, 309, 54th Avenue North, and two variances to the subdivision regulations to permit a lot without street frontage and to permit a lot that does not meet the infill lot size compatibility standards. And staff recommendation is withdrawal on that one. Item 12, 2014 S-037-001. This is at 507 Moore Avenue. This is a request for final plat approval to create two lots on property located at 507 Moore Avenue and a variance to the subdivision regulations to permit a driveway off of Moore Avenue. Staff recommends deferral to the March 27, 2014 Planning Commission meeting. Those are all the items for deferral or withdrawal.
Okay, commissioners, you've heard the request for item 2A, 2B, item 10, 11, and 12 to be deferred or withdrawn. Is there a motion?
No move.
Motion second, all in favor? Any opposed? Items on consent, Bob?
Okay, before I get to the items on consent, as information for our audience, if you're not satisfied with the decision made by the Planning Commission today, you may appeal the decision by petitioning for a writ of cert with the Davidson County Chancery or Circuit Court. Your appeal must be filed within 60 days of the date of entry of the Planning Commission decision. To ensure that your appeal is filed in a timely manner and that all procedural requirements have been met, please be advised that you should contact independent legal counsel. And as notice to the public, items on the consent agenda will be voted on at a single time. No individual public hearing will be held, nor will the Commission debate these items unless a member of the audience or the Commission requests that the item be removed from the consent agenda. So as I read the following items into the consent agenda, please raise your hand or let us know if you'd like that removed from the consent agenda. First item is item 3 on page six of the agenda, 2014 Z-008 TX-001. This is a request to amend the zoning code pertaining to required bicycle parking for all principal uses located within the urban zoning overlay district or an urban design overlay district. Staff recommends approval with an amendment, and there is an amendment at your desk. The next item on the consent agenda is item 6, 2014 Z-016 PR-001, is on page seven of your agenda. This is a request to rezone from CL to CS zoning for properties located at 7417 and 7421 Old Hickory Boulevard. Staff recommends approval. Next item is item 7, 2014 Z-017 PR-001. This is a request to rezone from AR 2A to CS zoning for property located at 3515 Penn Hook Road. Staff recommends approval. Next item is item 8A, 2001 UD-002-006, the Music Row UDO. This is a request for final site plan approval for a portion of the Music Row UDO district for properties located at 105, 107, and 109 16th Avenue South and at McGavick Street unnumbered to permit a six-story, 194-unit multifamily building with entitlements of the Music Row UDO Subdistrict 2 sought in the accompanying modification request, which I'll read next. Staff recommendation on item 8A is to approve with conditions. Item 8B is 2001 UD-002-007. This is also the Music Row UDO. This is a request for modification to the Music Row UDO district standards for properties located at 105, 107, and 109 16th Avenue South and McGavick Street unnumbered to permit the site development standards of Subdistrict 2 of the Music Row UDO to extend over the entirety of the requested properties. Staff recommendation is to approve with conditions. Next item is item number 9 on page eight of your agenda, 2008 S-061 U-12. This is the Brentwood Branch Estates Concept Plan Extension. This is a request to permit the extension of an approved concept plan for the Brentwood Branch Estates subdivision for eight single-family clustered residential lots located at 501 Broadwell Drive and Hill Road unnumbered and at Trousdale Drive unnumbered. Staff recommendation is to approve the extension of the concept plan approval to March 13, 2015. And then under Other Business, number 13, the reappointment to the Downtown Code Design Review Committee for the term March 13, 2014 through March 13, 2018. Staff recommends approval. I believe the list is at your desk of the folks on that committee. Staff recommends approval. Item number 14, the new employee contracts for Stephanie McCullough and Letitia Berkland. Staff recommends approval. And item number 15, employee contract renewal for Anita McKegg. Staff recommends approval. And then the last item on the consent agenda is item 19, accept the director's report and approve all administrative items. Staff recommends approval.
The consent is item number 3, 6, 7, 8A, 8B, 9, 13, 14, 15, and 19. Is there a motion to set those on consent? Is there a second? Motion second to approve those items on consent, all in favor? Any opposed? Those items have now been approved on consent. For the audience, the three items that will be on public hearing today is item number one, which is Greens Hills Transportation Plan. Item four is 612 Second Street. And item five is Music Square Flats. Those will be the only items that will be discussed by the commissioners.
Could you say that one more time? That it's 1A and 1B will be presented, and then 4 and 5? Item 4 and 5.
It's the only items that will be on the public hearing today. So we're now ready for 1A.
Good afternoon. I'm Michael Briggs. I'm a transportation planner in the Planning Department, and I'll be presenting on items 1A and 1B on your agenda. And those items are related to the Green Hills area transportation plan. These items are major amendments to both the Major and Collector Street Plan and the Green Hills Midtown Community Plan. They were deferred from the November 14 and December 12 meetings so staff could continue meeting with the community on the planned strategies. The Green Hills area transportation plan was originally conducted by a consultant team in 2011 and guided by a steering committee and resource team of residents, business owners, and technical experts. During the development of the plan, community input meetings were not held, and the plan was never presented before the Planning Commission for adoption. In 2013, there was a rezoning before the Planning Commission in which staff asked the Commission to consider the objectives of the 2011 study related to a street realignment of Warfield Drive. That development was approved by the Commission and Metro Council, precluding reservation of right-of-way for a future street connection. Since then, staff has worked with the community to analyze the strategies of the 2011 plan and modify them based on additional technical analysis and feedback from residents and business owners. The first network plan to review involves the transportation backbone within Green Hills, which is the vehicular network, and over $57 million in future investment is identified as needed in the area within this plan. Minor improvements, such as continued monitoring and adjustment of signal timing and phasing, are recommended. As redevelopment occurs, opportunities should be sought to restripe travel lanes and add turn lanes to increase capacity at intersections. And consolidation of driveway access points through access management will also be critical to improving traffic flow along Hillsborough Pike. Although not strongly emphasized in the draft plan, a depiction of a median as part of a three-phase approach to access management along Hillsborough Pike was included in the plan, and staff has outlined a condition of approval in your staff report that removes that depiction. With each transportation mode, we'll begin with the street network in Green Hills, and we'll just briefly quickly point out that this is Hillsborough Road. You have Woodmont Boulevard to the north, Hobbs Road to the south, Abbott Martin, Richard Jones, Glen Echo, Belmont Boulevard, and Granny White Pike that make up the major streets within Green Hills. This gives you an idea of the development pattern, and it's mostly large blocks, curvilinear streets, and so this becomes a challenge for mobility within the area. And then just point out a few destinations, the Mall at Green Hills, the Hill Center, Burton Hills, Hillsborough High School, and the Public Library. Two street connections are proposed, and they're shown in green where there is existing right-of-way today, but a connection does not exist. These connections involve Bench Street and Stokesmont Lane, and they're between Woodmont and Gray Bar. Two additional connections are shown in light blue and include a connection between the Hill Center and Banditwood Drive as redevelopment occurs in the area. And the second connection is a realignment of the intersection of Crestmore Road with Glen Echo Road, and aligning this intersection will help with traffic that gets stuck moving east-west on a small segment of Hillsborough Pike. And note that the discussion of this realignment was inadvertently left out of the draft plan, and staff proposes a condition to include that discussion as part of approval. The next set of street connections are shown in red and also address the needs of motorists moving east-west from Richard Jones Road to Abbott Martin Road. These streets are near Hillsborough High School, and Metro Schools announced since posting the static draft plan that they will keep Hillsborough High at its current location. They'll be assessing the future of the high school at this location with the potential for development opportunities in the area. And so we have noted this announcement as a condition of approval in the staff report. The transportation plan proposes then extending Abbott Martin Road to the east to connect with Hillmont Drive and establishing additional north-south connections parallel to Hillsborough Pike. And keep in mind that this is just a depiction showing a need to break up the street grid to a more refined network within the area. Also, the plan notes that aligning Hillmont Drive with Lone Oak Road at Richard Jones Road is needed with these improvements. The next addition to the street network carries the refined street grid system north of Glen Echo Road and utilizes adjacent metro property involving the Green Hills Library. Commercial development along this portion of Hillsborough Pike may redevelop in the future, and discussions should be pursued at that time about making a connection both east-west and north-south within the area. Finally, an area lacking good connectivity south of Richard Jones Road is identified in the plan, and portions of this area have a special policy within the current community plan for future development to be oriented towards Hillsborough Pike and mobility to be improved in the area. The existing development along Hillsborough Pike that is currently one-story, strip, center, commercial, and rental may be redeveloped in the future, and this includes the Royal Arms Apartments property. And this depicts a variety of potential connections that could be made within this area as redevelopment The next mode of plan involves mass transit, which already is served by three bus routes, the number-two Belmont, the number-seven Hillsborough, and the number-21 University Connector routes. $6 million of future transit investment needs is identified in the area. The plan proposes improvements to transit stops, making them attractive and accessible, and an example of improvements is shown along Hillsborough Pike in front of the high school. Transit signal priority at intersections along Hillsborough Pike is also identified, and transit signal priority allows a bus that is behind schedule to communicate with the traffic signals and prolong a green signal to catch up on time. Also, the study of connections to other areas of Nashville served by transit is identified. The street network again forms the backbone of the mass transit system, and it's key to point out that this is the Mall at Green Hills, and Burton Hills are two key areas to serve. One way of improving service in the area is making connections with bus routes in Green Hills instead of requiring transit riders to connect downtown and Music City Central. And so the light blue line shows the Belmont and University Connector routes being modified to meet with the Hillsborough Road route that's shown in pink. And this will be at a mini hub for transfers in the future. And so right now, we show this area near the high school, and the draft actually depicted it at the old library's location along Crestmore Road. One condition of approval is analyzing with MTA about the best way to depict efficient service with the mini hub in the area. A local circulator bus service is needed in the area in the future, and this is one conceptual route providing service to Burton Hills, which has been identified as a need in the community. And a park-and-ride is proposed in the Burton Hills area through a joint-use parking agreement. The park-and-ride can be utilized by those coming to the area during peak shopping hours to park their vehicles and take transit to different shops in Green Hills or to catch service into downtown Nashville. Keep in mind that the 12th South Commercial District is close by, and the expansion of the circulator concept to that area may be feasible to serve residents there with mobility needs into Green Hills. And finally, there is also a need to study how the area may be connected by transit in the future with any future bus rapid transit service along West End. The pedestrian network plan recommends at least $30 million in sidewalks investments in the area. Again, the street network forms the backbone for pedestrian mobility, and the pink shows the existing sidewalk locations. And you'll notice that the grid of sidewalks north of I-440 and how the street network becomes more sparse with sidewalks south of 440. This restricts mobility movements within Green Hills and is closely related to the historical growth of the area, which emphasizes car travel. The green shows the sidewalk needs in the area, and it's focused on arterial and collector streets and on local streets that make significant connections. Additionally, a series of pedestrian promenades are identified to connect people to commercial areas within Green Hills. These are shown in bright purple, and so attractive walking options connected with sidewalks will encourage people to walk from shop to shop instead of driving and adding to unnecessary traffic congestion in the area. Finally, very high and high-priority sidewalk projects are highlighted in yellow. This includes completing sidewalks along Hillsborough Road from 440 to Harding, extending sidewalks to Harpeth Hall along Hobbs Road, connecting Belmont Park Terrace with sidewalks that will connect to JT Moore Middle, and a first step in connecting residents to south of 440 to the side- of 440 to the sidewalk network north of 440 along Lombardi Avenue. And these projects are estimated to cost over $7 million, and I should emphasize that this has only been scoped for one side of the street and not on both sides of the street. The bicycle network plan is focused on expanding the types of bike riders in the area, particularly novice riders who may be hesitant to ride in bike lanes and in traffic. It outlines over $23 million in future bikeways investment. Again, the backbone of the bike system in Green Hills is the street network, and we've added the park locations on the map. The brown shows the existing bike lanes in the area, mostly around the mall and along Woodmont and Belmont north of the Green Hills Activity Center. The orange lines show proposed future bike lanes extending to Lipscomb University and over to Hillsborough Pike. We should also add to this the new street connections that shall have bike accommodations. And then a series of multi-use paths and greenways are then identified to encourage novice riders. And a multi-use path is a 10- to 12-foot-wide asphalt path for bicycling, walking, and running, and it is separated from the existing traffic. This network parallels 440, connects 12 South with Green Hills, and parallels Hillsborough Pike. A greenway along Sugar Tree Creek is identified, and we have noted in the staff report a condition to continue the greenway to Burton Hills. Expansion of the B-cycle bike-sharing network is identified at three locations in Green Hills. Lipscomb University is interested in connecting their students over to the Hill Center area and are encouraged by the bike network outlined along with the Bcycle expansion. They're open to partnering for a Bcycle location on their campus, and two other stations are identified at the mall and at the Green Hills YMCA. Finally, shown in yellow are the high-priority projects, and they represent an investment of over $3.8 million. This includes a multi-use path from 440 to Overhill that roughly parallels Hillsborough Pike through and along the edge of neighborhoods, a bike lane along Glen Echo Road connecting Lipscomb to the mall, and the portion of Sugar Tree Creek Greenway from Burton Hills to Abbott Martin near the Green Hills Y. Let me briefly recap how community participation went. Staff called the members of the resource team and steering committee back together to meet during this process. An open-house-style meeting was held in October and was followed up by a question-and-answer forum in November on the strategies within the plan. During that time, staff also met with additional neighborhood groups and business organizations, and a final open house was held in February that presented the draft plan and priorities to the community. And a static draft was also posted on the Planning Commission's website at that time. Nearly $75 million of investment is identified in the plan, and we should reiterate that much of the improvements rely upon private sector redevelopment to implement and coordinating that redevelopment with adjacent metro property. Currently, there is no metro funding to implement specific construction items in the plan, but this plan should inform funding and prioritization discussions. A broader conversation is needed about how to leverage resources given limited metro funds. The area is a significant retail center for the region, and there are opportunities to build upon this significance to contribute to the area's growing infrastructure needs. Staff recommends approval of the Green Hills area transportation plan with the following conditions. These conditions were discussed during the presentation except #6 and 7, which adds the public meeting feedback to the plan and grants staff permission to fix typographical errors. I will hang around to answer any questions or concerns that may be raised.
Thank you, Michael. This item is open for public hearing. Anyone who wishes to speak in support could come to the microphone, give us your name, and you'd be allowed two minutes. Seeing none is anyone in the audience who wishes to speak in opposition, you'd come to the microphone, give us your name and your address.
My name is Frank Engler. I live at 140 Hillsborough Place. I'm at the corner of Lombardi, Hillsborough Road, and I-440. So I see all the traffic almost every day in this area. This plan will not alleviate the traffic problem. I mean, you can connect all the roads outside of the core area, but you're gonna have to solve the problem by solving Hillsborough Road. There's no other way. And all the traffic I've seen comes in off of the interstate. Those are people that live outside the area. Now, as my son has told me, you need to concentrate on the core area, which is where the mall and Hillsborough High School is, and work your way out. The proposal with MTA to have the buses synchronized, I mean, to where they can control the lights, they're fighting for the same traffic lanes as the automobiles, and I've been on Hillsborough Road in that very core area, and I can tell you the buses are gonna have a difficult time trying to navigate to catch up if they're behind time. They're gonna be automatically behind. Now, the problem also about Hillsborough High School, school board's talking about rebuilding it, pushing it back, adding, selling off the frontage on Hillsborough Road, and that they want to sell it to a developer, which will add more traffic because it would put more retail. So the problem is not on the peripheral streets. This plan will not solve it. You have a plan that was put in force 20 years ago, 1994, and basically, nothing's been done. This is not funded, just like the one in '94 was not funded. I don't know how this is gonna work. It just can't work. There's no way.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, I declare the public hearing closed.
I know there's been a lot of effort put into the research that's taken place here, and I did want to ask you, will there be one more opportunity in the community to get community input?
No, this is it.
This is it, okay. I understand the gentleman's concerns. Certainly, any of us that have driven out there understand, because there is a problem. But this certainly has possibilities, and like you've said, it's no way that there's money just not there now to do this. So this is something unfortunate, this is gonna take a while. I hate to see this just sit on some shelf and gather dust. That's the only thing that bothers me about it. But for now, I think that it's a reasonable depiction of solutions that could take place, realizing that they will have to be done in lots of different phases. Thank you.
William?
No comments.
Eric?
I agree with Phil on this. Basically, I think it's always good to have a plan in place, first and foremost, and then, secondly, though the money is not there, and though the traffic is very heavy, I do think it is a move in the right direction, and I'm of the opinion doing something rather than nothing to alleviate or mitigate some of the high-traffic issues is always a step in the right direction. So I do support this plan.
Rudy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Well, first, I want to thank the staff for working on this. I know that sometimes the Green Hills transportation plan can be a little controversial, and when we first started, I had a question about the Granny White exit. So I know that you didn't mention that in your testimony, but I'd like to hear what the plan is on that.
Sure. It's not recommended in the plan. You know, we met with both TDOT officials, Nashville Area NPO, Metropolitan Planning Organization officials, and discussed the idea with them. They indicated to us at TDOT that it wasn't necessarily a high priority for them on the state transportation system. And then, the regional transportation goals that the Nashville Area NPO develops and adopts through their regional transportation plan puts an emphasis on maintenance of the system, expanding mass transit options, and expanding biking and walking options as well. And so we do not feel it would be a project that would rank very highly within the region when there are so many projects that are competing for transportation funds. And so it's not recommended within the plan.
Thank you. I appreciate that, because when the plan, when we first started discussing, and I received a lot of calls from constituents and folks in the area that opposed that particular piece of it, so I think that's important to note in the presentation. And personally, I want to say, one of the more exciting parts of the plan for me is the, if you could go back maybe to the map where the Glen Echo and Crestmore intersection is. I live in Creve Hall, I'm probably one of the folks that clog up Green Hills, so if there's any Green Hills folks out there, I probably am part of the problem. But I will say, though, that this particular intersection, which is where the CVS is, can you point it out, kind of where that is? Yeah, right there. That is a major clog in the area, and so I want to, for me personally, and I think for the area, that this particular intersection, solving that particular issue with the turn lane, you can only fit like three or four cars in that particular turn lane. And so in this particular plan, I think that's a pretty exciting point for me personally, and I think for the Green Hills residents, that if we fix that, it could really relieve some traffic. And I know that there's a lot of congestion in this area, but that's one of the more exciting parts of the plan for me, including the bus system, the bus improvements, and the sidewalks and the greenways. That's very exciting for me. So I appreciate the staff and all the neighborhood coming out for this, but I think this is gonna be a good start. On this particular intersection, I do have a question. Is it funded in any particular?
No.
Okay. We need to work on that.
I agree.
Thank you.
Andre?
I think this is exciting. I think the frustration of having a plan without funding makes sense, but on the other hand, to have the community input, to think about where they want streets and how they're gonna alleviate things for the future when there is money, it's much better to be prepared and have thought through it, I think, than not. So that aspect of it doesn't bother me so much. I'd rather be ahead of the game instead of saying, "We got a lot of money, let's just spend it somewhere," and not have thought it through. So I don't think the plan is, it's not a waste of time to have a plan at this stage, even though it's early. And I think the point of it is to have lots of different solutions. If we've got emphasis on bicycles and pedestrians and smaller, you know, different arteries for the cars to take, that alleviates congestion on one artery. And until we have bigger funds for greater mass transit, you know, these are ways that are less expensive to start and start to spread the traffic around. So I think in theory, that's what we're all talking about, which I'm pleased to see. A question I had about the high school, I've always sort of imagined Hillsborough going more vertical or having some creative solutions in our schools, but one thought that came to mind before all that land gets carved up, I think I'd like to maybe add a recommendation or suggestion to that item number three, that we consider the grade school and middle school population. I think G Green is the closest grade school, and it's really crowded. JT Moore is nearby. While we have our own city property, I think we ought to consider, when they're talking about redeveloping it, that we work with the Metro School Board to discuss where we're gonna put other children that are of different ages besides this high school. Maybe there's an opportunity to integrate some of that at that site. I'm just throwing that out there, because I think now would be the time to talk about it again before it happens. So I'd like to somehow phrase something to consider in their redevelopment, that we are, be sure we're discussing middle school and grade school needs in the area as well. Is that succinct enough?
I think the school board is pretty well on top of that.
I mean, I would think they would be, but I just want to, it's about land use too, and so I think if we can weigh in on it, then that would help their conversation.
Well, as that discussion about how Hillsborough High School's property is gonna be used, it'll come back before this body, because chances are that, given what the policy says for that property now, that's probably gonna have to change. Rezoning will probably have to occur. There's also gonna be land that's gonna have to transfer ownership, and we'll want to set that land up so that it can be used for particular persons. So this body's gonna have another opportunity to review how that's gonna move forward. I'd also point out that in the last year, we've become more regular conversations occurring between the planning department and the school board's staff about trying to plan and not just react to growth in population, and us being able to talk to them about how rezonings have changed, where populations are gonna grow, the type of zoning that we're allowing in certain areas, and how that's gonna change the density in those areas, and have them thinking about those things as they begin to plan out how they're going to expand schools. So we are a much bigger part of the conversation now than I think we have been in the past.
That's great. Well, again, since these other plans are concurrent, it would help to keep highlighting them as we discuss them. And then that also brings to mind the open space plan. I noticed, you know, there's sort of two parks, and that's also metro property where the school is, and we just want to be sure, as we're thinking about greenways, that we think about other types of open space. So just, I don't know how you put that in there as a reminder that we keep those conversations concurrent. Otherwise, I think it's exciting, and I'm sure it'll keep developing eventually as real money comes along, but I think it's a good start.
Need a motion and a second. Anyone want to say something?
Well, I was gonna add that, and I think Commissioner just pointed this out a minute ago, that these plans are very important, because that's how you get to the funding piece of it, is you create a plan that identifies the needs, it identifies what improvements there would be, and without a plan, it's almost impossible to get to the next step, which is the funding. And so this is a first step in the process, and I agree with you, Commissioner. I hope it's not just, it doesn't sit on a shelf. I don't think it can, given the growth that we've seen in Green Hills, but it is the first step in moving towards getting the funding for these individual projects.
Mr. Chairman, can this motion include both 1A and 1B?
Yes.
I so move approval with conditions.
Both items, 1A and 1B, correct. Got a motion second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. We're ready for item number four, which is 612 North Second Street.
Okay, item four is a request to rezon property located at 612 North Second Street. The property's outlined in red. This is just to the east of Dickerson. The Salvation Army is to the west of the site on Dickerson. The request is to rezon the property from single-family residential RS5 to Pacific Plan Residential and for final site plan approval. Staff is recommending that the preliminary SP be approved with conditions and disapproved without all staff conditions, and that the final site plan be deferred. Existing zoning is RS5. It permits single-family residential, requires a 5,000-square-foot minimum lot, and would only permit one unit at this location. This is a regulatory SP, so like the RS5 zoning district that's current on the property, it provides bulk standards, that's how it would develop. So the first thing is that it would permit a two-unit or two-family residential dwelling when, today, there's only one unit permitted. It requires that it be detached so that it would appear to be two single-family units. In the Irma zoning overlay, if you do a duplex, they have to be attached, but... and a maximum of 45 feet overall, and that it requires that access onto the site be limited to the alley only, and that there cannot be any driveways onto North Second Street. The policy is single-family detached in neighborhood general. With the units being required to be detached, the request is consistent with the single-family policy. The policy also, or the plan also supports a critical planning goal, which is infill development, which permits an additional unit, promotes density. And in conclusion, staff is recommending approval of the preliminary SP with conditions and disapproval without all staff conditions, and that the final site plan be deferred until a later date. And the reason that is because at this time, we don't have adequate information for a final. So, we will likely be able to sign off on a final with a building permit, since there will not be any infrastructure that comes in and just be a permit for a house. So, with that conclude.
Thank you, Jason. Item is open for public hearing. The applicant be allowed 10 minutes, and you may hold two of that back for rebuttal. Is the applicant's representative in the audience?
Hello. My name is Myron Dow. I'm the principal with Strategic Options International. I am the owner of the property. I bought the property back in October of last year with the idea that the current structure didn't evaluation, and it didn't make sense to do the rehab work on it. It was too much work, and the costs were not justifiable. We made the decision to look at building a new structure. One of our concerns was because of the backyard of this is River Chase Apartments, we were concerned about risk. We were also concerned about risk because directly across the street at 609 North Second Street, there's a skeleton house that's been there since I first saw that part of the street back in July of last year. So, that also presented risks for us as well. So, our next option was to say, "Hey, you know what? Given these concerns that we have about risk, let's show a commitment to the neighborhood to overcome the perceived risk that's in the back as well as the front." We have designs that will fit the neighborhood norms, hardy board. We're looking at two-story structures. We also noticed that on this side of North Second Street, there's not much going on in terms of development compared to other parts of McFerrin Park. And as a developer, I have to be concerned about risk. That's it.
You'll be allowed
And I'll save some time for
Two minutes for rebuttal after that. Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in support?
Good afternoon. My name is Brenda Ross. I live at 813 Stockle Street, 30-year resident of District 5 community, Vice President of McFerrin Park Neighborhood Association. However, I'm not here representing McFerrin Park Neighborhood Association. The 612 zoning project was brought up at our last two meetings. At our last meeting, we had 26 individuals. At the meeting, we discussed this project for a lengthy time, and at that time, McFerrin Park chose not to take a positive or negative in terms of the zoning. As a resident of the district, I welcome the 612 project. It would greatly improve our neighborhood. One of the problems that we are having right now is the new NO with the gentification. And this is one reason I believe the Neighborhood Association did not take a stand, say, five or 10 years ago. A lot of our new residents would not even come or attempt to walk through the neighborhood, nonetheless, live there in the neighborhood. Any improvement to our neighborhood is greatly appreciated. I'm a strong believer of who moved my cheese, and I believe with the old and the new, we must look at the change and welcome each other. We have reached our hand out to welcome the new residents of our neighborhood, and I ask of support for the 612 project. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in support?
Hello, Commissioners. My name is Ben Jordan. My address is 1011 North Fish Street, just a short distance from this project. Today, I just want to come and support the project because I've lived in the area for eight years now and have worked very diligently to try to improve the overall experience in the neighborhood. And whenever we're doing neighborhood cleanup, one of the blighted areas and the areas that we have to direct all of our attention is North Second and Joseph. When you talk about urban blight, I believe this address is probably in the dictionary somewhere close to it. And we are, I just want to speak in support and just say that I think that we're excited that someone has a vision and has a plan for this specific street because it's been much needed over a long period of time, and we're glad to have him. Thank you.
Anyone else wishing to speak in favor? Anyone that owns and wishes to speak in opposition?
Thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Dane Forlines. I live at 805 North Second, seven-year resident. There are some things that I could say positively about this project, but since I'm speaking in opposition, I've only got two minutes, I'm going to focus on that. I do have concerns about this proposal that I think are very important to our neighborhood that's rapidly changing. First, this project is not consistent with the purpose and intent of SP zoning. This property is not unique, and it does not pose specific limitations to the owner. Those are both explicitly stated as purposes in the specific plan. I also do not believe that this project is context-sensitive. Although there is an RM20 zoning one block away, this particular block is predominantly houses that are less than 1,000 square feet. The proposal is to put two houses that are each 2,200 square feet on this lot that's 50-foot wide. The effect will be 4,400 square feet on a 50-foot wide lot when most of the houses on this block are less than 1,000 square feet. I think from a design perspective, this is not consistent with the character of the neighborhood, which again, is part of the purpose and intent of SP zoning. I also have concerns about the rapidly rising housing costs in the neighborhood. We do have a lot of development that is currently on North Second Street and on adjacent streets, nearby streets. There's not a shortage of improvements in the neighborhood right now. As a matter of fact, they're happening so fast that this is having an impact on housing prices, and vulnerable residents are being priced out because of property taxes and rising rents. So, I'm afraid that this approval will set a precedent that will have a long-term impact on housing prices going forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
Hello. I'm Marcy Garner. I actually live at 610 North Second Street, so I will be directly impacted because I'm next door. And I actually am not for, against, I have a lot of questions. I see on your forum information, so I would like to, if I will, have an opportunity to speak about the information that I need as the next-door neighbor. And I am concerned about, and Dane brought it up, and it was my major question. My home is 792 square feet, and I have the same size lot as what you see next door. I wonder how two structures will fit on the same lot as mine and have a small home. I mean, I'm busting out the seams in my own home. My second and major concern is if the developer is not a local resident, and I have a concern during the building process, and I can't get in touch with him, then I'm stuck with that problem. And I'm already across the street from a problem or a blighted property that I can't seem to get in touch with the owner. So, I would be stuck next door and across the street from that person. So, I wonder is there some sort of policy with the commission where you have maybe mandatory communication with a developer, especially when they don't live in the neighborhood that they're developing?
Oh, that's public record, is to pull the permit and their contact, and most of the time, they'll put a yard sign in stating that companies build it and their phone number. So, I'm sure if you would ask the builder, I'm sure he would give you the information, be glad to hear from you if there is a problem.
They'll also post a permit, have to post a building permit, which will have that information. They can contact the codes department and find out who to reach.
You're right. I've been trying to do that across the street, and I haven't had any luck. So, I'd hate to have a property next to me, that's a problem, and a property across the street from me, that's a problem. That's unfair to me as a homeowner. So, I'm just concerned. I have a lot of concerns, especially with the size of the lot, being ambitious, trying to put two properties in one small lot, and you compare that to my itty-bitty house, how are you going to do that? And how is that going to impact me as a homeowner and the people around me? So, those are my concerns.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, applicant be allowed two minutes for rebuttal.
a month, and I'm readily available. And I did share my contact info because she just met me today for the first time, and I did exchange my contact information and my coordinates. Regarding a specific plan and the uniqueness of this project, I think that the exposé that was shown on the local news about a month ago concerning River Chase would probably, well, it would warrant this as kind of a unique situation in that folks looking to buy a property in this neighborhood may be hesitant because of what they witnessed on the local news about a month ago regarding River Chase and the conditions, the deplorable conditions that folks are living there. It's an eyesore. I've heard that it was worse than this, but after watching the exposé about a month ago or several weeks ago, I still think that there is work to be done on River Chase. And as a developer, I have to be mindful of potential buyers and how they're going to perceive the situation. What I'm trying to signal to the neighborhood is that, hey, that this area is open for development too, and we're not forgetting you. And I'm, my goal is to send a strong signal that, given the blighted property that the young lady mentioned across the street at 609, given the backyard of this neighborhood, we want to show folks that we're really serious about fostering change here as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Davis, I'm going to declare the public hearing closed, and then we'll hear from Councilman Davis.
Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I want to thank you for your volunteering, your time here. Because Commissioners do not get paid, this is a volunteer position, so I thank you for listening. And I want to thank the planning staff for their hard work, and I want to thank my neighborhood chairs from McFerrin Park, one coming out for and one coming out against for taking their time and being open-minded, both of them, and really communicating and helping me to bring this developer in front of my neighbors, not just for one community meeting, but we talked about it at two. And as you saw by the roster, you know, the Neighborhood Association chose not to take a position here. I have the difficult task of standing here in front of you. You know, either way this goes, you know, I'm going to make one of my important, one of my important neighbors unhappy, and that hurts my feelings greatly. And one thing I want to talk about though is I have to put the needs of everyone. One thing I am open to do is amending this on third, which I can, to make sure that this young lady's questions get answered to the full extent that she's happy. One thing is, I understand about the other blighted property, which does not belong to this gentleman that's causing a problem on that street, and codes and other metro staff members have been at it to try to relieve that eyesore that does not belong to this gentleman. This gentleman has done other great houses in my neighborhood, and I'm not really worried about, you know, him having a similar project that goes unfinished due to the fact, number one, he hires local people to work, and not just from a temporary service, but really hired local people that live in the McFerrin Park neighborhood, and made a conscious effort to reach out. And I know we see these horror stories on the news all the time with people building these weird connected or weird, the Bill Kocord homes. This is not one of those. When developer came to us to ask us, "Hey, this is what I'm looking at doing. What do you think?" Immediately, I said, "Go talk to Mama and Daddy at McFerrin Park over there." And next thing I said, "Get you a good design." He went out and got Lynn Taylor, tailor-made plans. I know a lot of you are familiar with Lynn's work. She doesn't do that cookie cutter kind of weird design work. She makes it match the neighborhood houses around, and we don't go with vinyl, we go with hardy board and maybe a little bit of brick. And I am not a developer. I'm the guy that no matter what happens in the neighborhood, it's my fault. But today, I stand humbly in support of this project, and I stand in support for three reasons. Number one, developer is using local labor, a local designer, local East Nashville designer, and also using, you know, local contractors to do the work here, and hiring people that are in my neighborhood, which I'm happy about. Jobs are always a plus, I always preach it at the top of my lungs at a council. Number two, keeping in contact with the neighbors because regardless of people being in opposition, he still stays in contact with the opposite parties to convey information, show designs, and which to me, my developers I encounter in my neighborhood, when they find out a neighbor's against it, they just don't want to talk to them anymore. Like, I'm not going to waste my time to show you anything. But, looking at this from overall, and I'm coming to a close here, sorry to take up all your time, but we need housing. I have houses on North Second, like the gentleman said, my neighborhood chair there said that we have houses there going up to as high as $350,000 on North Second Street. A year and a half ago, me and most of the people here talking about this project did a night out against crime on North Second. We blocked off the whole street. We shut down drug activity for a night, which made the drug dealers mad at me, but thanks to the good folks at the East Precinct, I'm okay. However, though, you know, now that with the help of the city government and myself getting sidewalks and other improvements there, it's starting to turn a corner. And now, we have growing pains, and now, we are all united in fighting off the riffraff and the people that are hurting our neighbors. And now, at this time, you know, I support this project, but I do support it with a heavy heart, knowing that one of my good friends and good neighbors is going to be heartbroken, but at the same time, you know, we need the housing stock that's under $300,000 in the neighborhood because no metro worker, at least I know, can afford a $300,000 home right now. And I just humbly ask you to pass this. I am looking at doing some amendments on third to attempt to appease, you know, my good neighbor back there, and also some assurances that, you know, this house won't end up like the other skeleton house so that my other school teacher back there is happy with this project. Also, I'm going to encourage the developer to please stay in contact with her every two weeks, and it may seem kind of weird, you know? I've been talking to John Cooper to ensure that, you know, I can add some amendments on third that will keep this project from ending up like that other house that just stands there as a skeleton, which didn't go in front of this body at all. It was a rehab of a normal single-family home, and I guess they ran out of money or something and just left everything there, just sitting there scaring the rest of the neighborhood. So, I humbly ask you to please pass this, and I will be asking, you know, for some amendments on third in an attempt to satisfy, you know, my lone neighbor out there, and also to make sure that my, also my school teacher back there is happy with the project. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman. Derek?
I'm a little torn on this one. I see some positives. Obviously, you're looking at neighborhood improvement, which it sounds like is something that everyone agrees with here. Also, infill development, which I'm a big proponent of, and I think that is a good thing. However, However, where I do have a challenge here is that if this SP passes, I just see some inconsistencies in terms of the character adding to, I guess, dwellings on that one piece of property where the surrounding dwellings in the same line don't necessarily have that. And so, that causes me a little concern there, so I'm not sure which way I'm going to vote on this, but I do see some inconsistencies in terms of character if we do allow that to occur on this piece of property, so I'd like to hear what others have to say.
Greg?
I don't know.
Andre?
I'd like to hear what everybody says, I'm not, I think it's, I don't have any comment.
Do you?
I actually have a question about the deferral of the final site plan, can you talk about that a little bit more?
Yes, final site plans, typically you would have construction drawings, it's typically for larger projects that will have infrastructure, so the next case that's coming up will have lots of infrastructure, which will require other departments to review construction drawings, like sewer, water, roadways, and those stormwater facilities, and this case, you're building a house, so none of those departments would look at that. So at this time, we're just saying that he had applied for a final site plan, and we're, one of the conditions you'll see in the staff report is that we could waive the final site plan if, when they come in for a building permit, there's no infrastructure required, which, pretty confident that there will be nothing required, so we would sign off on the building permit as long as it's consistent with what the SP requires.
Okay, thank you.
Phil?
While you're up there, would you walk us through, I mean, it's a little bit strange, and I know to the audience that here you go from a current situation where you have one house, and all of a sudden you're talking about four residences, basically. So can you tell us why you're able to go to an SP and increase it by four times?
It's just going from one to two, so it's just two more, so they're not doing two lots, or two units on each lot, it'll just be a single unit on, well, it'll be two units on one lot, so you're not going to four. The logic is-
Isn't it a possibility of duplex, or am I-
No, it's permitting a two-family unit on one lot, so the maximum number of units you could have within this SP are two units, so two residential units.
Thank you for clarifying that, okay, that's good. Now, thank you to the neighbors that came out today, we appreciate that, and special thanks to the councilman for actually giving us a little preview, that he has a final word on certain aspects of this, so I was glad to hear that. Commissioner Atkins and I have been there, done that, so we know exactly what he's talking about. So, yes, that's good, I think it's a good move, and certainly there are some steps along the way, there will be safeguards as we go through this, so I am at this point moving approval of the SP with conditions and deferring the final site plan.
Second? Motion second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? One opposed, okay. Ready for item number five, Jason, which is Music Square Flats.
Okay, item five is a request to rezon property located on Music City West and Music Square South. This is a request for preliminary SP approval to permit a mixed-use development with a maximum of 230 multifamily dwelling units. It would also permit redevelopment under the ORI-A zoning district. Staff is recommending approval with conditions and disapproval without all staff conditions. This is another view of the site, consists of six properties, larger office building on the corner, and four other small homes that are occupied as office spaces. Existing zoning is ORI, which is Office Residential Intensive, it would permit a maximum of 186,872 square feet of floor area at the whole, on the whole site. Proposed zoning is, again, specific plan, mixed use. This is the site plan, it would permit a maximum five-story building with a maximum of 230 residential units. Access into the site would be from Music Square West and into, at Music Square South, which would be into a parking structure, there's also loading along the alley. A traffic impact study has been reviewed and approved by Public Works and includes conditions for improvements along the streets. The first level of parking is below ground, and the second level is at ground level, they have agreed, and have included liner units, which would be along the street, which would help create a streetscape. It's consistent with the major collector's street plans, they provide wider sidewalks. This is a preliminary sketch of the building, showing the height and massing, the yellow units at the bottom would be residential units. The alternative to developing under the current SP, the SP plan that was just presented, is that they could be, they could redevelop under the ORI-A zoning district. It's currently zoned ORI-A, so as far as the type of uses, they're the same, maximum floor area is the same. The only difference is in the ORI zoning district is that it requires that buildings be pushed up closer to the street, and that parking be located at the back and side, which is consistent with the types of development we're looking for in urban areas. The policy is office concentration, it supports all types of intensive office, it also supports intensive residential, and commercial and accessory uses that would support office and residential. Plan also supports several critical planning goals, as outlined in your staff report, and inclusion staff is recommending approval with conditions and disapproval without all staff conditions.
Thank you. This item is open for public hearing, an applicant be allowed 10 minutes, and you may keep two that back for rebuttal.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, I'm Jim Murphy with Bradley A. Ramble, coming 1600 Division Street in Nashville, I represent the developer Four Star Group. Briefly, as the staff points out, this plan is consistent with the community plan, it's consistent with other developments that are in this neighborhood that have been recently approved. We've spent a lot of time with the staff, working on making the streetscape interactive, that was one of the real challenges with this project, because this property is a little narrow, and so we've had to do a lot of work to try to activate the streetscape, which we've done now at this point. I've talked with one of the opponents, they're concerned about commercial development on this property, as this commission knows, this plan is the specific plan, so if any change that would convert this to a commercial development would have to come back to this commission. We're not, you know, we're not proposing that, that's obviously, our plan is the plan you're having here. And the other concern was the density, and as staffs pointed out, density in this, this is consistent with the community plans, recommended density, there's adequate infrastructure, there's adequate traffic capacity, there's a need for live-work space in this area, this would provide it. So, for those reasons, we would request that you approve, excuse me, request that you approve the plan. I'll turn it over to Kevin Gangware at Civil Site, who's our engineer, to talk briefly about the specifics of the plan, and answer any questions you might have, and we'll reserve two minutes for rebuttal, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman, Kevin Gangware, Civil Site Design Group, representing the developer on this project. Wanted to point out a couple of highlights on this project. As part of this project, we'll be dedicating right away along 17th Avenue, along Music Square South, and along the alley in the back. Also being, including with this, a new four-foot landscape strip along 17th Avenue, and what is basically a 16-foot sidewalk, it's an eight-foot sidewalk with a four-foot furnishing zone, it's all gonna be concrete pavement, so it'll be, in effect, a 16-foot wide sidewalk along 17th Avenue. The traffic is always an issue for all developments, I think, did have a traffic study done. 17th Avenue at Music Square South operates currently at a level service B, which I know you guys are, most of y'all are familiar with what the level service nomenclature is, with this development, that intersection continues to operate at a level service B, so there are basically no changes to the level of service for the intersections that were studied. Part of this project also, at the staff's request, we started with all residential on this, which is what our developer's primary focus is, staff was interested in having the street level activated with some other uses, or at least residential, that had walks and balconies out onto the street. So the developer worked hard to redesign his plan to include that, so now it will have active units on the first floor, along with a bike shop, leasing office, and some other things that make the first floor more active to the neighboring community, so we're happy to answer any questions that you have, we agree with staff's comments, and just hope for your approval.
Okay, thank you. You do have two minutes left for rebuttal.
Thank you.
Anyone in the audience wishing to speak in support?
Chairman McLean and Commissioners, my name is David Sharon, own property at 1016 and 1020 16th Avenue South, it's about 700 feet from this location, I have three apartment buildings at that site. So, I got about three questions here, one is, under ORI zoning, if this is gonna be SP, can they have businesses, can they have office in these units?
I'll let Jason answer that.
Under the SP, they would be able to have office.
And there's adequate parking for that?
No, not live-work.
No?
No.
No, okay. Is there ingress and egress for a vehicle in the alleyway?
No.
No. Okay, and what is the mix on the, one-bedroom, two-bedroom, three-bedroom?
That, I don't know.
Okay, all right, I'm in support of this, I owned the property for 28 years, about 700 feet from here, if, what's good for them, good for me, so I'm coming back with another one if you approve it. Okay?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Others wishing to speak in support? Seeing none, anyone wishing to speak in opposition?
Ladies and gentlemen, I'm Martha Davis, I am the operations manager for the General Commission on United Methodist Men, that sits, would sit right beside it, across Music Square South, southwest, one of the, right there. We're at the corner of 17th and Grand and Music Square, they all meet right there. Our concern, I have concern information, I mean, we're kind of against it, but, you know, we understand to a certain point, but the traffic that comes down Grand Avenue and Music Square West has been an issue for a long time. We have accidents in front of that building quite often because of it being 17th, Music Square West being a one-way street, and then we have people who come off of Music Square West, I guess, Grand Avenue, that cut across our parking lot to miss the light. And we have been in, we have been in contact with Metro Police and Public Works about that light and that condition. Many times we come out our front door, it does not sit right on the sidewalk, we'll come out the front door, and the next thing we know, there's a car zooming in front of us, and so it's a safety issue for us. As being a nonprofit, we do not have the funds readily available to put up fence and gates around our property, as we sit on the corner, and if we did, it would probably be knocked down because of all the accidents with tourists. There's a lot of tourists that come through there, and so they don't realize it's a one-way street, and they can't turn out of the right lane left. And so we're concerned about that, and parking for the structure, I understand there's a parking garage, but what about visitor parking, is that gonna be included inside, because there really is no place on the street for them to park, and many students and people who work at Vanderbilt Park, and so, we have concern.
Thank you. Others wishing to speak in opposition?
Mr. Chairman and members of the commission, my name is Ronald Miller, I live within 600 feet of the proposal. It was nice to hear Mr. Murphy said how much time he had spent with the planning commission, but he did not speak about how much time he spent with the residents. Just only the last, probably five minutes before the meeting start that we meet, or heard any communication. We are looking at a presently ORI zone, which allows 103 units, but we're looking at 230 units, 130% increase. What, as neighbors in the area, we are familiar with the 12th South, these are the, our streets are the ones that will collect the people that, where the cars will park. We have no driveways in our homes, and we will start, those streets will fill up. So we would like to have something started before it happens. We would like for it to be deferred, at least come and talk to us, and say what you can offer, and what we can do, and what we can compromise with. I am concerned about the SP zoning, even though their intent is not to have a restaurant or some type of business, commercial use, this SP would allow it, maybe for the next owner to do it. So, we have concerns, and would like to have it deferred, and at least have some communications between us. Thank you.
Thank you. Having a problem with the phone up here, it's cold, I can't turn it off. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
Hello, my name is Rick Shedd, I'm the general manager for Broken Bull Records, which is directly adjacent to the building that we're talking about, we're at 65 Music Square West. We just, we purchased that building in December of 2013, and just moved in within the last 60 days. I guess our concern is just, you know, they're gonna put this building up, which is taller than our building, which is going to block all view that we have from our building. We didn't, we didn't know about it until our owner, Benny Brown, received a card in the mail, it was maybe a month ago. And, so it's, you know, it's frustrating to us to see that, to have, and then to have 234 families move in, where the parking is definitely an issue down there already on the street, doesn't sound like they're gonna have parking, you know, that you're talking about parking for those residents, but then you're also talking about all their guests, everyone's gonna have people over and things like that, and we already have people parking in our lot, we had a building at 35 Music Square West, we had the same problems where people from other, from other offices, and companies, and residences were parking in our parking lots. I think if anybody knows anything about Music Row, the parking is definitely a problem down there, and we moved, you know, specifically so that we could have the parking that we needed for our employees, we have approximately 45 employees that work for us, and we have lots of visitors, we have several companies that all take meetings and things like that. And the other part is, you know, Music Row is an important part of the city, and keeping, you know, we've got a lot of these music companies that are moving off Music Row, and kind of diluting what that whole area was, represents, I mean, certainly there's the local residents, but there's lots and lots of businesses, and I think that that's going to further cause businesses to move out, because they can't find the parking, they can't find the square footage that they need, and, you know, they're taking from CSAC all the way down, but then leaving a tower that's been sitting there for, I don't know how many years, that's kind of a blight to the area, and so that would be nice if that were part of this package too, to remove that building. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
Thank you for the opportunity, my name is Bill Gatzemus, and my wife Crystal Gale and I own 51 Music Square East, so across the alley for this proposed development. And I couldn't quite understand earlier, so I have a quick question, where- Where is the access to the parking? Is that on Music Square West, which is 16th, and also on Music Square South, which is Grand? Are those the only two accesses?
Yes, we can see the pointer here.
Yes, and there. So no access through the alley? The alley won't be changed in any way?
The alley will be widened.
Widened, okay. Well, we bought our property in the late 70s, and it's sad, from historical sense and a personal sense, to see Music Row changing. And we understand that change is inevitable, but this seems to be a drastic change to add this number of apartments above what was, what's already zoned. We haven't been contacted by anybody until we got our card in the mail, and then a letter a week ago about this. So this is my first exposure to this. Parking has always been an issue. I'm concerned about the parking, especially with that number of families. We have a large lot, and it's frequently filled with guests, parkers, who, we've never towed anybody yet, but, and would like not to. But parking is an issue. Our access is through the alley, so there's not much parking on the street that's available because of students and other workers that park there. Traffic, especially on Grand, which is Music Square South, and that light from Grand to Music Square East, West, 17th, is already a disaster. So those are my initial concerns. It's hard to digest all of this so quickly. I wish that we had been contacted earlier by the developers, because this is a major change to a historic neighborhood. And one of, thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition?
Yeah, name's Benny Brown, and I am the owner of 65 Music West. One of my employees just got up and spoke earlier. Bottom line, I paid over $4 billion for Sonya TV building. And after I purchased it and moved in, I get this notice. I mean, I've got, I might have very well moved down into the city like Sonya TV did. You know, I feel Nashville needs to protect Music Square, Music Row. I mean, we've got management companies there, we've got GAC there, we, you know. I feel so much of Nashville was built on the country music, okay? I wouldn't be opposed, and I understand the growth's got to happen, okay? I wouldn't have a problem if it was an office building where music related, to where we do keep music at Music Row. But I've got a real problem, I definitely wouldn't have located or built or bought a building there if I'd have known this was happening. And I liked the last gentleman, I got a notice this year, a couple, three weeks ago, saying there that it's notification of this planning meeting. So I'm very much in opposition.
Thank you. Anyone else wishing to speak in opposition? Seeing none, the applicant will have two minutes for rebuttal.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Wanted to touch on, we're grateful for these comments, and we appreciate the neighbors coming and speaking. Want to talk about density. The density ORI, the single, the multifamily is allowed. It's a 3.0 FAR, if you do the math on that, we could, I'm not sure where Jason got his numbers for 100 units, but you could get almost 250 units in that context. If you did a building, you could do 186,000 square foot building at 200 square foot per employee. That's nearly 900 parking spaces. So the 230 units that we're creating would be far less than what the amount of traffic in an office building that's allowed by the current zoning would be on that. We are providing parking for the tenants. They will be parking for the visitors as well. It is controlled parking for the tenants. So as I mentioned before, on the traffic, it's level of service B at this intersection. It's continued to be level of service B. We can't unfortunately help the parking issues that the community around us have, but we are providing parking for our tenants. The building height issue, it's allowed to be 5, 6, 65 feet currently under the current zoning, and we're asking for 85 feet. So I'm not sure we'll get anywhere near that high, but that's the, that allows for the parking deck as well. And we followed the rules related to notices. We're not sure how to involve the neighbors. This project has moved quickly, and I don't think we had any opportunities to have a big neighborhood meeting because we've gone so quick on this project. So thank you so much for your time.
Thank you. Declare the public hearing closed. Lilly?
Sure. I had a question about the units that would be allowed under the ORI. Can you talk to that some?
Yes, that was a mistake. That was a mistake in the staff report. The maximum, if you assume 600 units, or 600 square foot units would be 311. If you assumed 800 square foot units, it would be 232 units, which is closer to what they're proposing.
Okay, thanks. Other question. A lot of the concerns that the residents had involved traffic, and there was mention of a traffic study that was done. Can we talk about that some?
I think the, we do have someone from Public Works here.
All right, thanks.
Good evening. For this development, a traffic study was conducted for this development. Real brief overview of some of the conditions from the review that came up. There's requirements for egress, ingress, egress from the garage units that they're using, control access gates. We have requirements in place for stacking, queuing requirements. There, the intersection, or the signalized intersection there at Grand and 17th, we're looking at analysis for the signal, there may be signal modifications required, striping, laneage requirements for that intersection. There's also sign requirements. There was additional one-way signs, just general requirements like that be, are conditioned with the review of the study.
So is that something that is going to happen if this is approved, or I guess, what was the result of the study?
There is conditions of approval that are traffic-related with this, with this project. The study was, there was a traffic study that was analyzed, and there's conditions of approval associated with it.
Okay, thank you.
Phil?
Well, I wrote down three questions. One has to do with visitor parking. That's leaving it a little bit foggy as far as, in my mind, as to how many they're going to be. Is there any requirement for the number of controlled parking spaces as compared with visitor? In other words, for 10 controlled parking, do you need one visitor, or that kind of?
The parking is based off the use and the floor area. And what they're proposing, this is an urban zoning overlay, and so they're proposing to use the same parking ratio that you would have under the current zoning. So you'd park in the same way. So there's no visitor parking. It's in, like, you have one space, or one space per bedroom, and then 1.5 spaces for every other bedroom. So you would do that with every one. Now, retail, if you had retail or anything like that under the zoning or current zoning, it would be by the floor area. So you would have, say, one space for 100 square feet, something like that. But it doesn't break it down to visitor or anything.
Okay, thank you. You mentioned that the alley was going to be widened. Why?
It needs additional, at max, the alley standard's 20 feet, and I think it's 16 or 18 feet currently. So they just need to widen it to meet Public Works standards, and also to help. There are loading areas back there, so they'll need additional space just to make it work.
Loading areas for what?
For like trucks and services, garbage, those type.
Oh, okay. But the building itself, there won't be any access from the alley to the new building, right?
There's no access, vehicular access. There probably will be fire escapes and those type of access points, but no vehicular access.
Okay, all right. That's reasonable. All right, the third thing. If a future owner, somebody buys this five years from now after it's completed, what would happen if he does want to change this so that he allows for offices in there and not just residents? Which is what I understand the proposal is, nothing but residents now.
They are wanting to do all residential. We did encourage them to add other uses into the SP that would permit flexibility in the future. So they have, in the SP, it would permit retail, restaurant, personal health care, personal care service, and office uses. And it wouldn't have to go back to council if that came in. It would just have to meet all the bulk standards. And again, that was something that we kind of asked them to do for flexibility in future because we saw it as a, that would be, some of that would be good for the area. It is also important to note that those uses are permitted today under the current zoning.
Just to clarify that point, we asked them to do ground floor commercial uses that would activate the street level, but if the residential units above, if they were going to convert, change those from all residential to all office, that would require an SP amendment that would have to go back to council. So that larger change. But we were asking for the ground floor commercial uses to activate the street level.
Okay, I kind of figured that's what it was. Okay, thank you very much.
Derek? Greg? Andre?
That was my main question is, because I think the flexibility of a building for the future is really important, that especially to support the businesses in the area that people can walk to go have amenities that aren't over there within walking distance as much. There are some amenities now on Edge Hill that certain people, I mean, you can walk to from certain areas. But I think to have, I wanted to be sure it was clearly in there, that they do have the flexibility in the future on the ground floor to put any of those four uses that you mentioned.
It is, and if you look at the back and the conditions, it's the number, first condition, it was the uses that are permitted.
Okay, because I just, I couldn't tell from when I was reading it if it was just live work allowed, or pure retail, or restaurant, or those other things that you mentioned.
It's not live work.
Okay. So it could be actual retail. I mean, I just think that's very important. I do, I am concerned about the communication with the neighborhood and the historic importance of this area. I don't know what the time track is with council, but there are a lot of creative, intelligent people over there that might have some positive input if they were allowed to speak to this. And I just wonder if there is time to have a community meeting before it goes to council.
There is no council bill.
Oh, that's right. This is just us.
No, no, it goes to council, but there is no, currently, there is no council bill. So there is nothing that keep you from deferring it, if that's what you're...
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. I mean, I think to, I think it's, I think it might be very positively received, and I think the communication and people's input might help have it be better received. And it is a major change. What would you, I just want to sort of ask my other fellow commissioners if you all think that would be worth deferring one meeting to allow, with the caveat that a community meeting is held in order to get people to understand what's happening?
Certainly. And I apologize for not mentioning that. I think that that is a miss in this case, that there is one needed. But if there's no bill filed right now, what are we looking at in the realm of time-wise? Because it seems like you could, there will be time to have a community meeting.
Or two meetings. I don't know. I just, I don't want to slow down the developer unnecessarily, but...
I mean, it's up to the, I guess it's up to the applicant to submit the information as far as when it goes to council, but it sounds like there's time.
Right. The commission's not under a deadline right now.
Do you all have that sense that...
I would like to ask that.
Okay, I just, I guess my point is, it is an important area in our city, and I want to be sure that we're sensitive to it. Could we, how would you feel about a deferral for a meeting?
Thank you, Andre. Well, we have time for the council meeting, first reading, second reading, third reading, to have a community meeting. And our client's more than willing to do that. Certainly there's notifications that have to happen and have the meeting. We would certainly have Council Lady Gilmore there. So I guess we would request that we did not defer here and allow us to have a vote, but with the understanding that we will have a community meeting before we get to council.
Well, I just was, my question was if there were, because it's an SP and it is so permanent, if there could be some constructive, creative input that then we could approve before it goes forward to council, I thought would might be helpful. I mean, we're just talking at ULI meeting about units that are smaller, and they're trying to get amenities out of buildings so we can activate streets. And I'm not suggesting we make units smaller, but just this idea of activating the street and getting engaged with the community is important.
Can I explain the concern? If you defer this, then we can't file with the council, and that's the problem. So we need, we need the planning commission's action to file an SP with the council. And if, so if you defer it, we're sitting, and that's our concern. We're happy to meet with the neighbors, and if in fact it requires changes, we will have plenty of time to come back to you and have you reapprove those changes, if there are, if there are things that we can work out.
It's got to come back for final.
It's got to come back for final too. So it's just, if it does slow down, it'll probably knock us off a cycle by a month, and that's the...
So we would see...
That's actually, the real impact is if you defer it, then it would set it all back a month.
Okay. So, but we do see it one more time before it goes to final?
No, I think this is...
I didn't think so.
No, but if we changed it, if we made significant change, we'd have to bring it back to you. And that's, and we're happy to do that. That's...
Yeah, the council would view it, if you made a significant change to the plan, then they would say that they would have to come back for review at that time.
Okay. All right, well then I'll...
And I would point out that during discussions with staff and with the applicant, that there were a number of meetings where we went back and forth about how to create a more active use on the ground floor. Initially, there was, there was nothing. It was a garage lot or just plain, and so this is something that we've advanced to.
Yeah, I would insist on that. I mean, especially for the businesses to have active places to go. I mean, I think that's really important.
Phil?
I have a question. If we approve this tonight, when do you plan to file?
Right away. Our goal would be to try, we're on the cycle now, I think, for June, or maybe May.
Right now, it's on track. If it's acted on today, it would be the May 6th public hearing at council. And if it's deferred, it would go to the June...
You definitely have time then to have a community meeting.
Yes. And we're going to do that, council. I mean, that's, we understand the need to do that, and we will. I mean, part of the problem was identifying who we needed to meet with. Now we have a list of people to meet with, and we'll be happy to have a neighborhood meeting and try to resolve it. And if that results in changes in the plans, we understand we're coming back here to have them approved. But we have time to do that because the, you know, we're talking about a May public hearing, so.
I move approval with conditions.
Motion second, approve with conditions. All in favor? Let me see, I show hands. Full, against?
Only because it's timing.
One opposed. The motion carries. Phil, do you have anything for the parks board?
We actually had four items last time that came under the Acquisition Committee. One of them involves a request for a wireless tower in Edward Warner Park, and that was, that was deferred indefinitely.
Take your conversations outside, please.
That request was deferred indefinitely. Next was Ed Freeman representing the City of Belle Meade requests the board to accept the donation of foliage and landscaping with long-term maintenance on Page Road, and we agreed to that. President of Hardin Corporation requests board consideration to accept a donation of 28 acres, which was kind of neat, in North Nashville, right where we needed it, which was great. We approved that. And the staff request board approval to acquire properties on Mill Creek in southeast Davison County for park and greenway use, and to accept up to $200,000 toward acquisition from the Land Trust of Tennessee. And we jumped on that one. Approved that.
Thank you. Doug?
Got a few items in regards to the...
Got a few items in regards to the, in regards to the director's report, reminding the commissioners that we're going to have to adjust three of our meetings due to conflicts with the election commission. We've got the April 24th meeting, which will begin at 5:30. It's still going to be here, but we're just going to delay it, beginning that, so that we can give them a chance to clear out, and then we'll come in behind them. On July 24th, we're still looking for alternative locations to, to have that hearing. And then on October 23rd, we're also trying to find a, a location to have that one. As soon as we do, we'll let y'all know. We've got a couple of things in regards to our, our office and employees in our office. We've got two new employees, Stephanie McCullough will begin March 31st, and Letitia Berklin. I don't know that we had, do we have a date yet on when she?
April 14th.
April 14th. Letitia will come in at the land development division, and Stephanie will be in the community plans division. And we're still trying to fill two more positions. They are the planner two position in land development and a planner three for the design studio with architectural and urban design background is what we're looking for. Still trying to fill Joni's spot that, that she abandoned us for Hunter's, not out for Hunter's, but for William Hastings Group. There was a request for, there were actually two requests for rehearings regarding the Clermont Place. I believe that you all have copies of the director's report, and we sent copies of the director's report that included both the requests as well as the response that was sent from this office. And it was determined by the chairman and by the director that there was no new information that merited a rehearing, that what was, that what was filed would not be considered new information because it was not relevant to the original. It wasn't, it wasn't information that you could have considered at the original hearing. So that, obviously that was denied. I think that that covers it, since we covered Nashville next at the beginning. I don't have anything else.
The July 24th meeting, we only have one meeting in July.
I believe that's correct, yes.
If, if that date was moved up to the 17th, would we be able to, since there's only one meeting that month, if we moved it 17th, one week earlier, is this?
I'm not sure. I would, I would, I would have to look and check with the, it might be, but I could check with the election commission and see how long they're using this room. I would also point out that we're still working on the redesign of the Metro Office Building, and that inside the Metro Office Building, there's a much larger conference room that's being built in on the first floor. And there's a possibility, and it should be finished before then, that depending on the size of the agenda, we might be able to host it there.
Any other comments? It's over.